Thank you. It sounded like a different voice this time, but who knows? All right. So, welcome everybody to the November regular meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation.
Thank you. So, next item is roll call, please.
Albert.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County.
Buckley.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County.
Darren.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Fuller.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
LaBelle, I have excused. Lap.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Shingles.
Present, Mount Pleasant, Isabella County.
Squatterito.
Present, coming to you from the city of Mount Pleasant in Isabella County.
And Thering.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. Next item, approval of minutes. So, we last met on, oh, actually, I take that back, approval of agenda. So, we have our agenda. It was pointed out that it should say November. Uh, I guess it's been corrected up on the website, but your packet, it still said October, but it's been corrected, right?
Yeah, it actually was corrected probably five minutes after it went into the mail.
Right.
Pull it back.
I saw that. So, is there anything, uh, and it has, we have three new business items. Anything else that needs to be on tonight's agenda that anyone is aware of? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda, uh, as prepared with the correct date.
I'll make that motion with the correct debate.
So, a motion by Darren, second by Shingles to approve the agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, either say yes or give a thumbs up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, we have our agenda. So, next item is approval of the minutes from October nineteenth. And those were the next item in your packet. Are there any corrections to the October nineteenth minutes? Anybody have? I didn't see any myself. I thought they looked, uh, looked accurate.
I would move to accept minutes as presented.
Motion by Thering to approve the October nineteenth minutes as prepared with a second by Darren.
Yes.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye and/or, or yes, or raise your hand. Any of those?
Yes.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that carries as well. So, the minutes are approved. Next item is Correspondence Board Reports Presentations. First item, uh, updates from Board of Trustees from Board of Trustees Representative Thering.
Yes, um, our October twenty-seventh meeting, we approved the PSUP twenty-one dash oh-three, the special use permit for Brienne Morgenberg for the home daycare. Um, also, the PSPR twenty-one dash eighteen, the final site plan approved with conditions for the Sheriff's Office that was on the twenty-seventh. On the tenth, and Rodney may have things to add to that, I'm not sure. Um, if I've missed something, please. Do Rodney, um, November tenth. The board approved the second reading and adoption of the PT XT twenty-one dash oh-one zoning ordinance amendments. Brian Milky wanted me to pass to the Planning Commission that he'd like to extend his gratitude to the Planning Commission for the good work completed on the ordinance amendments. And lastly. If I understood correctly, the township received its first. ARPA fund deposit, the first of two for seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um. We are just in the beginning stages of, of determining, uh, how to move forward with that, but we do have some time. Um, and then, well, I guess this would be the last thing is we're, uh, working on our fiscal year budget twenty-two. But you're up to date as far as to the best of my ability.
Any questions for, uh, Commissioner Thering, Board of Trustees stuff? So, that was the, that was one of the COVID relief bills, the, that big pot of money, is that right?
Yep, it's in two installments and the first one, I believe, is here.
Okay.
I think the next, does the next one, Rodney, come in a year from now?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Laub.
Has there been any discussion yet on how to use those funds, or is that still just an ongoing discussion?
Um, I think we're just in the beginning stages. Uh, we haven't really, we've had very little discussion. We've had some emails kind of go back and forth of the parameters to use it by, um, or things that we can use it for, but, um, I think with the budget kind of budget that we're working on for twenty-twenty-two, it's, that's kind of taking the lead right now. I would imagine the beginning of the year, we'll, we'll start to dive into that and, and as soon as we do, I'll absolutely keep the Planning Commission, um, informed as to, um, what we're discussing. So, if you'd have any ideas, you could, um, maybe present something during the, um, public comments. At a trustee meeting, or I could pass it along to from, as I give, uh, board reports to the Board of Trustees.
Other questions? Uh, one, one suggestion would be, uh, office chocolates.
Chocolates. I'm gonna put that down, okay?
I mean, so sooner or later, we're gonna go back to face-to-face meetings and I need, I need something in the dish to grab on my way in. So.
I'll see what I can do, Phil.
I would think seven hundred thousand dollars would buy a lot of peanut butter cups or something good.
You never know. You never know.
All right. Anything else? Okay, next item or next, uh, yeah, next item is, um, Buckley Updates from ZBA.
Um, just as a suggestion, uh, to, uh, Commissioner Thering, there's always, uh, room for prioritization, uh, sidewalks and pathways, uh, a little bit of seed money there, so. Keep that in your, keep that in mind as you're kind of talking about, uh, what you might do with, uh, found money there. As far as an update for, uh, ZBA, uh, we had our October meeting canceled and there was no November meeting as well. So, we're kind of, uh, back to a holding pattern for now, but, um, I don't know if Rodney has anything that he sees on the agenda like coming up in the future, but for now, all's quiet.
Uh, we do have a December meeting, I think, uh, an email should have gone out on that, so, uh, I, uh, you will be getting, uh, but the next, uh, within the next week or so, we'll be getting information that we had a variance request that'd be on the December agenda.
Great. Yeah. It was in today's paper, actually.
It was, yes.
Now, any questions for Commissioner Buckley? That's certainly a, a good suggestion in terms of the, the funding. If one wanted to combine those, you could have like chocolate stations along the sidewalks. Sorry. All right, um, let's see, what else? Uh, sidewalks and pathways. So, Commissioner Darren?
Well, we had a meeting finally, and, um, I think my takeaways from that, and again, I'll let Rodney jump in here, but, um, the highlights was, uh, that I'd say our team's having trouble getting, uh, easements for our twenty-twenty-one projects, even our, we have twenty-twenty projects that we're still working on. I, I didn't want to state that, but yes, we do.
Yeah.
But, but I think, um, so, so we were, we're struggling, the team's struggling to get the easements. And so, what Rodney asked of us was to maybe think of an expansion of priorities for twenty-twenty-one, uh, of other sections that maybe we go after and, uh, attempt to get the easements so that we can do some construction. And so, we had a lot of conversation about that. The, um, the seed money might go a long way because one of the other conversations we had, uh, that was brought up was about the maintenance of sidewalks. And I know we've, we've heard this before and we've talked about it, but I think it was, uh, brought up that there's hesitancy, uh, maybe some hesitancy in getting on board with the sidewalks because of the maintenance issues and the cost of it. So, um, there, there was, uh, quite a bit of discussion about that with no real resolution. It's a tough subject, right? But I like what Commissioner Buckley stated. Let's take some of that seven hundred thousand and put it into buying people's prop, no. That's off the record, no, um, but I think there's, there's the challenge of, of this committee is we can come up with all the priorities we want. And we have the right people working on it, but it's, it's getting the homeowners or, I'm sorry, property owners, uh, to give up their property and take on the maintenance. So, there's the struggles that we're up against. Did you have anything else, Rodney?
I think you've covered it.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, just out of curiosity, since you mentioned that, uh, and we're gonna be looking at this, I guess, later this evening, but, um, once the, once the committee identifies the priorities, uh, really, those get sent forward, I think, probably to us, and then they eventually make their way up to the, uh, to the Board of Trustees and they would be adopted as township priorities. But when you, when you talk about you're having trouble getting the easements, the committee's not responsible for contacting property owners. That's a township function, correct? Township Office is doing that.
Correct.
But you're saying it's, it's been a difficult process.
Yeah, Rodney, uh, they were stating how difficult they were getting, uh, to get the buy-in for the easements for the sidewalks. So, even, even down the street from the hall, so. It's, uh, not as easy as what we had hoped.
Hmm. And I, I don't, and I'll open this to everybody, but what is, what is the law then? If a person, if there, if there's property that's on, you know, a, a significant road like, you know, twenty or Lincoln or, you know, these, these areas that have been identified as priorities, there's no, there's no. I don't want to use the wrong word here, but there's no like eminent domain or, or understood that the, because isn't there for utilities, isn't it understood that the first ten feet or whatever are, are an easement for public utilities?
Oh, only, yeah, only if they actually own that easement. Uh, they, the, uh, uh, the challenge we have is that our, our county road commission, uh, typ- typically sidewalks are put within the existing road right-of-way. And then, in that case, we don't need a separate easement. The road right-of-way itself provides it. Our road commission has, has had a longstanding practice of, of, uh, minimizing their need to secure additional right-of-way. They have worked, they've expanded roads within the existing sixty-six foot wide right-of-way. Uh, you know, so, so where there once was a two-lane road, uh, there now is a four and sometimes even squeezed a five-lane road into that same sixty-six foot wide right-of-way, which means there, in some cases, the curb of the road is only a foot or two off the edge of their right-of-way. Uh, that's the case on bluegrass, it's the case on broomfield, it's the case, uh, in parts of Lincoln. Uh, it, 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 it's a case in almost anywhere where they have expanded that road, they, they almost never have, have secured additional right-of-way. Uh, and for them, it's easier if they can work within the existing, but it does create all sorts of trouble for everybody else because utilities that could go in the right-of-way if it was there, uh, the sidewalk, uh, that could go in the right-of-way if it was there, all have to secure their own easements. Uh, and so, you end up with this sort of mishmash of easements, uh, you know, outside of, uh, outside of the, the narrow right-of-way. Uh, and that's what, that's really what's created the trouble for us is that these property owners don't want to provide that easement. For various reasons and, and there, you know, each one has their own reasons for that. There is an eminent domain process, uh, and absolutely, the township can pursue that, uh, where we can essentially compel, uh, the, uh, the property owner to, to, uh, accept an easement and, uh, it is something we would have to pay for. It is also something we would have to pay for all the, the legal, uh, work needed that would need to be done. Uh, it is a legal action, it's expensive. Uh, and so, in all likelihood, we would burn up most of our sidewalk budget on the legal side of it, just to acquire the easements. Uh, and it, and obviously, that has its own political challenges, you know, it, uh, you know, it's not being very neighborly when you're coming in and compelling. And so, we don't, we, that's a really a last, last choice, uh, in this to, to pursue that, so.
Other questions or comments on this topic or for?
That was, yeah, that was something that during the budget discussion that we had, um, it was just, we touched on some of the sidewalk projects that have been kind of out there for the last couple of years and not that we would wanna relocate those funds to other projects, but it was just kind of, you know, we should reach out to the various entities that these monies are allocated to and say, you know, where are we on the project? And if it's really no clear answer as to when we can start, you know, just the, the thought of maybe let's start looking at these funds for different areas of sidewalks, um, in other areas that we can do that. Uh, it was just kind of something we touched on, especially talking about the Lincoln, the Lincoln Road area projects that have kind of been having some issues with those, those easements. So, that's, I'm not sure exactly what's gonna happen because the conversation was, was there, but it was brief and, you know, we don't wanna move to the DDA and they have funds allocated, the township has funds allocated for that, so we want to be very careful. If the project's gonna start moving, you know, of course, we want to be able to be ready to go, but if there's really no end in sight, we may consider some other sidewalk projects elsewhere in the township, so.
And, and I think, uh, Commissioner Thering, I think that's where the conversation went. Uh, we felt, uh, that the team was quite stalled out because of the priorities we had. Not that there's not other work going on, but, uh, if we expand the priorities, it allows them to go and have that conversation about easements in other sections that might not have been the twenty-twenty-one priority, so. I think we're all in the same, um, understanding that if you don't spend it, your potential is you lose it. Uh, luckily, we have a board that's hanging on to it, but how long do you hang on to it? I mean, you're already starting to ask the questions on, uh, the, the right things, right? Where, where, where then can we spend this money and get sidewalks put in? Ultimately, that's the goal, so. It, it, I think Rodney's got us going down the right path there, so.
Um. I, I know that we're spending a lot of time on a, on, on just a committee update, but, um, I guess I'm just curious. Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm just curious. I mean, I do think, uh, what you're saying, Commissioner Daring, uh, uh, Commissioner Darren, I spar, uh, I, is that, um, it, it, it sounds like we're on the right track then. If, if anything, if we, if, if, if we can focus on areas where we, either we have an easement or whether we're an, a property owner might be more amenable to, um, in, in easement than it, just by virtue of actually showing progress in building sidewalks, it might give us an opportunity to maybe, um, incentivize other owners to, to allow that to, to add on, but I guess I'm just curious from Rodney too, if, if, if a property owner says no to a potential easement, is that just kind of it until uh, they change their mind, or I mean, is there, is there any alternative besides eminent domain?
Uh, we, we have been, uh, the project that's right here near the township hall, we, we've, uh, started the process to look at, at an alternative design where we might be able to avoid an easement. It's not, not the preferred way to do it. Uh, we'll be putting a sidewalk in some places close to the road. It, it's going to require more drainage work. But, uh, we'll look at alternatives. Uh, in some cases, we don't have alternatives. Uh, uh, bluegrass, for example, we have some, some short sections of sidewalk that there is no right-of-way outside of the curb. The curb is, it's basically a foot off the curb and you're out of the road right-of-way and, and, uh, and so, the, all we have is either to, to convince these owners to, to allow the easement or, or pursue eminent domain ultimately. Uh, so, we'd like to minimize, you know, the amount, the number of, of eminent domain requests we need. The fewer we have, the, the lower the cost. And so, we, we will continue to pursue things, uh, until basically it looks like there's no other, other possibility. Uh, one thing I will say is that you do have, uh, coming up on your January agenda, uh, a meeting where you'll have the sidewalk committee members with you and, uh, and, and so, this might be a good conversation to continue then.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. So, the next item is public comment. So, we always have a, towards the early stages of the meeting, we have a public comment section where individuals are invited to address the planning commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. So, if there's anyone in the, among the attendees who would like to address us on a non-agenda item, uh, you're invited to do so at this time. Uh, you can either hit your raise hand button, or if you're connecting by phone, oh, pound something, star something, what is?
Star, uh, the star key and the number nine key.
Star nine. So, uh, signal one way or the other, signal that you would like to do so, we'll, we'll make that possible. We ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and, uh, to limit your comments to three minutes. So, uh, general or, uh, this public comment, initial public comment is open at, uh, seven twenty-four. And I'm gonna assume that folks who are here are here for the agenda item, so, uh, not seeing any indications of anyone who wants to offer a public comment. We'll go ahead and close that back up and we'll have another public comment later in the meeting. Uh, so, we'll move on at this time to new business items. First item is, uh, PSPR Site Plan Review twenty-one dash nineteen, Graphic Central Edition at fifteen eighty Park Place. It's a combination of the preliminary and final site plan application. And, um, you may have noticed in your packets, a fairly extensive, um, set of updates from the staff. And so, I'll ask, uh, Rodney first, if there's, if you want to summarize that, Rodney and/or Peter, uh, for us, before we hear from the applicant and then we'll get them over here and, and, uh, you know, have our discussion and then move to a deliberation of it. Uh, we actually can't, I can't hear you.
Yeah, there we go. I can, I can tell, I can if I'm not muted. I don't know when I got muted, but, uh, anyway, I, uh, yes, you have our report. It's dated November first. Uh, applicants have the option to apply for combined preliminary, preliminary and final site plan approval. Uh, as the ordinance says, uh, you have the option to, to approve both. If you choose, you have the option to approve only preliminary, uh, or postpone action and request changes. Uh, this, although the applicant did apply for both preliminary and final, they did not meet the, you know, the, uh, the basic requirements for final site plan approval. And that's reflected in our report. There's a number of details, as, as you mentioned, uh, most of which are final site plan details. Uh, there are a few that were preliminary site plan details, uh, but, uh, uh, they, they did not meet the criteria for final site plan approval. So, as we noted in our, our, uh, our, our report on the, uh, last page, uh, the page thirty-seven of your, your packet, uh, the, uh, the plan doesn't meet the standards for, for combined preliminary and final, but it's sufficiently complete for, for considerations of preliminary site plan. Uh, there are a number of outside agencies that still need to, uh, weigh in, uh, on this, this, uh, project. Those are all final site plan details. Uh, it's our finding that, that, uh, with, that, with the exception of those details, it could be addressed in a final site plan, that, that the app, the applicant and the plan is generally conform to the, the standards for preliminary site plan approval. So, in our recommendations, that's approach we took. We're, we're comfortable with the, with our recommendation, uh, for approval only of the preliminary site plan, uh, subject to essentially some housekeeping additions. We, we have three conditions there. Uh, they're all essentially to cover the, the details that need to be included on the final site plan. And so, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go along. Uh, I would ask our applicants, I, I, I see, uh, an applicant that's listed or a, a, an attendee labeled as John. Uh, I know he's one of the applicants, but, uh, if I could have, uh, whoever is, is part of the applicant team here, they could raise their hand. Thank you. Uh, I, I can bring them over for, as, as, uh, for, for, for this item.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I also want to remind, uh, Commissioners that, um, this is the one where the township, where the staff report was inadvertently omitted from the printed packets that got mailed out. So, the, those pages were mailed out, uh, in a later email from Tara. So, you should have the, uh, the Rodney's report on this application, uh, as an elect, as a PDF in your, in your email from, uh, I forget which day it went across, but probably late, late last week. Any questions for Rodney before we, uh, open it to the applicant? All right, so, um, so, we normally give the applicant an opportunity to, uh, uh, talk to us about the project, anything you'd like to say by way of introduction or, or, uh, to address any of the points that were raised by staff and, and then obviously stand for questions. So, not sure who the spokesperson is, but, uh, you're, you're welcome to, to, uh, make a statement if you'd like to at this point.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, my name's Jeremy St. Andre. I'm the owner here at Graphic Central. Um, I apologize, I don't, I'll have to have John answer the, uh, the three things that were brought up. I, I don't have that in, in front of me and I don't have a, a knowledge of building or anything like that, but I can, um, I don't know if you guys want a little history about what we do or what we're looking to do here or anything. I guess it's, um, that's, uh, that's up to you. What we're, well, I can tell you what we're looking to do. We just need to add on here. Um, we make decals for manufacturers and, uh, business has been booming over the last year and we've added a lot of employees and we're just trying to get some more space to, to expand our operation here.
Hmm. Isn't it true that this project came before us before? Because there was some reference to it and it looked familiar to me.
Uh, we did an addition a couple of years ago. It was just a small one, though.
Oh, okay, so that was, that was already something you did and you're, you're now you're expanding yet again.
Yeah, we moved, we had a, a building and mission, just, uh, oh, just in between the pixie and the, the green spot there. And we actually sold that, one of the, the medical marijuana companies that never got, they didn't get their license, but we sold it and moved back here over into Union Township and, uh, thought we had tons of space for a long time and we got here and we're, we're in a year and we realized we were out of space. Now, it's happening again, so good problems to have, I guess.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, well, that, I mean, I think that's helpful and, and you'll, you'll be in the room here, so if Commissioners have questions for you, can, you can address them. But I guess probably we do want to hear from the engineer and, and, uh, just any reaction to the, to the, uh, issues related to the application.
Okay.
That's the engineer, can you? That's the engineer come you. Okay, so somewhere we're getting feedback. Uh John, I'm not sure where it is.
Uh can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, sorry about that. This is John with JBS Contracting. So I'm the applicant. Um I'm. I'm here to answer any questions you got. I think when we originally submitted the uh the documents. Uh we didn't have all the outside committee approvals. I think since then, uh as far as I know, we do have all the outside committee approvals that came after the original application came to you. So I'm not in agreement that we don't have the outside approves, but um. I guess that's just my argument. Um so I'm here for any uh direct questions you got. And that's about all I got to say.
Okay, so uh I'm going to open it to the planning commissioners. If y'all have any questions on this project. Uh applicant is right here to to answer them.
Am I not seeing the sidewalk details?
That's one of the missing items, yes.
Okay. Well, I see that there's a list of missing items, but I found the I found the exterior lighting. And the dumpster. Enclosure.
The uh uh the sidewalk comments are number three in our report. So it's right below the the uh little chart that has a few. Uh missing details. Uh item number three talks about the sidewalks. This is an item, the the twenty nineteen site plan that they uh that came before you uh that earlier. You approved. Uh they that was also case where they added the sidewalk, uh the revised version. And so it was shown on that plane, but first uh with with the relief granted, but was not shown on this plan as required. Pe- Peter, uh do you want to comment on the status of the outside agency permits?
Yeah, and so we um the two outside agencies that we still don't have. We have the Public Works Department and we have the Stormwater Management with the county. And I know that they've been in contact with the county uh for stormwater management, the Drain Office. I think last I talked with um. I think because Tim Woodbury was outside, I talked with Hunter Nivison from JBS and he had indicated that. They had gone over the plan with the Drain Office, but we're just waiting on the letter. So I haven't gotten the letter uh for approval from the Drain Office. And then the uh Public Works Department, uh utilities for the township. We've gotten feedback, but we haven't gotten approval from them. And as they they have, uh last week we sent out the packets. Uh they did drop off a revised plans. And I I I'm reviewing those and and those are going to be, you know, part of a final site plan. Um but what you guys have is what was originally um given to us and and what our report speaks to. And that's for the preliminary plan.
So as far as the lighting goes, the main thing that's missing is the photometric plan, it looks like, and and possibly some. Further specifications on the on the. Style of of wall pack lighting that they're going to use.
Exactly, yeah. So what what they show in the plan is is more than sufficient for a preliminary site plan, but but not enough for final. So that that's it's just a level of detail and uh that that needs to be shown on the final to verify uh compliance to the ordinance's requirement. So. Uh that's 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 where we are. It certainly uh they can they can take care of these things, but but they're all final site plan details. And there were enough of them that we weren't comfortable with the uh conditional final site plan approval. Uh so that's why we pursued it and recommended as a preliminary only.
Other questions from commissioners?
One of the things on here was that easement. I was just curious if John knew what that easement was. That would be on page. Like. Thirty-seven D. Number seven there said easement.
Are you asking me to speak?
If you, yeah, if you have any information about that.
I do, and I have a letter that we submitted to the township from Pete Lorenz regarding the. Regarding the easement that it's Nolan Boyd, uh the the neighbors to the west have built on the easement. The easement was. To obtain access to the neighboring property and the easement can't be used because the neighbors built over the easement. Regardless, the easement can come across the back of this building and it literally has no effect on anything we're doing, regardless if the easement is there or not.
So is is the easement it uh become unclear? I haven't seen your letter yet. Pete Pete may have, but uh.
Well, it's some reason you're not seeing any of this stuff because we had submitted actually approval from uh Tim Warner on the Stormwater Management. I've submitted uh photometrics and I've submitted fisher cuts and 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 none of that stuff is 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 like part of this. I don't I don't know what's going on that you don't have that one. It was all brought to your office.
Well, we keep keep in mind that our agenda packet i- is finalized a week ahead. Uh and the the plans go out a week ahead. Uh so it it we can't we can't get materials in kind of uh in pieces at the last minute and add them in. So that that's part of the reason why what the planning commission has seen is what you submitted uh for their review. But what what I'm asking you is it before before we go on with this, I just want to uh understand. The easement was recorded on the back of the property or not recorded on the back of the property?
We do. We do not have any record of a recorded easement.
Okay, all right. And and your and your letter states that?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
So is there correspondence that we should be looking at that was re- received? After the packets went out? I mean, we do that all the time, right?
Well, if not, if in terms of this plan, that's before you tonight, uh there's not any additional correspondence that that you need to you need to see. Uh as I said, the applicant has been pursuing and continuing to pursue things that weren't that that worked in the in the packet, you know, in the original application. They should have been for a final site plan approval. Uh obviously, there's continued to work on that. But uh in terms of this particular packet, what you have in front of you is is uh is the application that was complete at the time the. The uh the agenda was closed and the package were sent out. So. Now you can, if one of your options is you can choose to postpone action. And wait and had and look at a revised combined final preliminary final site plan next month. I I don't recommend that. I think there's value in granting them the preliminary site plan approval, so they know they're on the right track and also so that they know that. That they're not going to have any new surprises. That's part of the preliminary site plan is uh approval, as the ordinance says, is that. You approve the general layout of things, you approve the the uh you know, the conceptual information about parking and and uh. And you know, the building locations and all those things. Uh and then it's just getting the details right for construction. And that's what final a final site plan is really the construction plan from a site plan perspective. So that's why all those details need to be in there, because right, you know, once a final site plan is approved. They go, we go straight to a building permit, uh so they can go straight to construction. Uh and and so I I think there is, uh I think the the project certainly is eligible for preliminary site plan approval. And granting that tonight would uh give the give the applicant the assurance that this project is is going in the right direction and the rest of it is simply working the details out.
So for the parking requirements, do they have to provide a spot for every two hundred fifty square feet of usable floor area?
That that is the the standard in the ordinance. I know, yeah, keep in mind usable floor area uh that has a definition, and that's not the whole site. It's not gross floor area. So it's not the whole building. Uh but actually, the standard that they met in twenty nineteen was one to two hundred. So actually, uh required more parking under the old ordinance than under the new one. Uh we don't have a concern about them meeting that standard of one to two fifty. Uh but uh but they do need to to show the calculation and and show the details that are required to verify that calculation on the site plan. This is where we one of the items we noted was they need to have a floor plan, because a floor plan, they need to show what's the use, how they calculate the usable floor area. Yeah, the the current ordinance and parking standards actually less than what it was in the previous one. It's an overall thought.
The did the old ordinance require the calculation to be shown?
Yes.
I do see a calculation on sheet C three. Is that not adequate? Lower right.
So that that calculation is not based on this standard uh in our ordinance uh that. And it also doesn't, it doesn't indicate what the, you know, there are a number of factors there that that they don't describe what they are. So they what they need to do is base it on our ordinance rather than. I I'm not sure what they based it on, but uh it needs to be based on ordinance. I as you said, ultimately, we're not concerned that that with them being able to meet the standard. In fact, they may have more parking than than the minimum required, which is fine. Uh but they they deem to show it correctly.
Again, I think the plan that we brought to you this uh this last week is all that. It's crazy.
So with with this in mind, as you said, we're we're recommending for this site plan you have in front of you, uh recommend approval of it as a preliminary site plan. There are uh really too many outstanding items to be able to recommend it for a final site plan approval. Uh but they absolutely have the ability to take care of those items and come back to you with that final site plan and even beyond the December agenda without any trouble. The it sounds like the outside agencies are wrapping up if they aren't already. And the key there with outside agencies is simply verifying that that uh their requirements will not alter the site design. So the the big one with that was probably the stormwater management that's left. I think the Public Services Department. Because this is the case of existing water and sewer utilities, so then it's really just a question of the details related to where those lines are and if they're affected by anything that's been. Any of the construction activity. So that's pretty straightforward once uh once they are have the information they need.
Other questions and comments from commissioners? Have have either have either of Rodney or Peter had a chance to look at what they've dropped off in the time since the the agenda closed? What he's referring to?
So I I can tell you that um. I have since the packets went out, uh I was given a photometric plan. Uh floor layout from the uh their architectural drawings. Uh I do have a revised site plan, uh that I've looked at some of the things that they have added. I haven't done any kind of final. Review where I've checked for everything. And I also have the. Like I said, the outside agencies outside of the two uh that were mentioned. And so. Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay. All right, and this stuff came in this week or last week, I guess?
Last week.
Last week, all right. I know we have, you know, we have taken steps to to kind of regularize and and you know, make sure our process is following a particular sequence and. So on, whereas, you know, you go back and you know, enough years, if stuff would come in at the last minute, we would try to, you know, get it through or whatever. But um it doesn't sound to me like you. Have have looked have had enough time to look at it in enough detail to know whether they've met. All or essentially all of the the concerns in the report.
So the the key with this is really that that uh. If first of all, if there was any way for for uh for for us to to move this project ahead and recommend it for a final site plan, we would. Uh I mean, you're aware, we've 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 had some cases where we've recommended approval of a final site plan with a few housekeeping. Conditions. I can think of one right offhand, and that's the county jail project. We're still waiting for those conditions to be met. Uh you know, uh so it we don't like to do that because we'd rather have it be clean, basically ready for construction. Go get your building permit and and start. But uh if the if the conditions are such that they're essentially minor, they truly are housekeeping. Uh details like the county jail project was uh then, you know, conditional approval of final site plan can be warranted. This this project, even with the additional materials, even if we could have gotten them to you, uh it it's not ready. As we still have an outside agency or two of them that uh have not uh granted, given their approval. And unfortunately, in both cases, they can have an impact on the site design. That's always a concern. Uh we don't want to prove something that then that outside agency comes, like, says, oh, you need to change this, this, and this, and then you they have to revise and come back to you again. Beyond that, like I said, they they have not resolved all the details. They have taken care of some, but they've not resolved all the details. I I wish I wish we could recommend the other way. It's certainly my preference, uh but uh this project's simply not ready. Uh we have, the one thing I'll say is that we updated the zoning ordinance, we added that that chart. And we and we put it in the ordinance as it truly as a checklist. That so that any applicant go could go through and use it as a checklist, go, yep, I have that, have that, have that. No, that doesn't apply, have that, have that, have that. Uh in this case, the checklist was not followed. The checklist is also included in our packet. Uh the application packet, as are the standards for for preliminary and final site plan approval. So any applicant can look right in there. And see exactly what they're going to be reviewed under. Uh yeah, so. It's it is if we made it as easy as possible for an applicant to provide you with a complete site plan uh each time. Like in this case, the checklist wasn't followed, the details were not all met, and so it's simply not ready for final site plan approval. It is ready, though, for preliminary site plan approval.
I understand. Well, uh. You've heard the discussion, both from the applicant as well as from township staff. We have a series of options before us, so um. We can either more, if we have questions, obviously, we should have more questions. Senator or Senator, I promoted you again, Commissioner Buckley.
Um yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and make motion.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and make motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve only the PS PR twenty one dash nineteen Graphic Central preliminary site plan for six thousand square foot building addition and associated site improvements at fifteen eighty South Park Place. Parcel number fourteen dash zero one one dash three zero dash zero zero one dash one three in the southwest quarter of section eleven in the B four general business zoning district. Finding that the October seventh twenty twenty one site plan can comply with applicable zoning ordinance ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including section fourteen point two point P requiring site plan information at fourteen point two point S standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions. One, provide all items of application site plan and outside agency approval documentation required per section four point two as part of the revised final site plans submental. Two, revise the detailed use statement sidewalk, parking, exterior lighting, easement, snow storage, and dumpster enclosure details on the site plan as necessary for compliance with the township ordinance requirements. And three, all outside agency comments and requests for plan changes must be fully resolved on a revised final site plan.
Okay, you heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lap. So we have a motion by by Commissioner Buckley, second by Commissioner Lap to approve the preliminary site plan with the stated conditions. Further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Buckley?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Squadrado?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
All right, motion carried eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. So preliminary has been approved and we look forward to seeing the final soon as it can be arranged.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next two items are, and we'll obviously take them one at a time, but proposals on ordinance revisions. And so the first one is proposal to update the private road ordinance from two thousand. And so again, you have a report from from Rodney, but I'll let him, I believe it was from, I'll let him speak to that and kind of frame our discussion for us. In particular, what 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 do you want from us specifically?
But in both of these cases, these are general ordinances. They're not part of the zoning ordinance. They you you do not, as Plan Commission, have a formal approval, part of the approval process, as you do with with the zoning ordinance amendment where so any these general ordinances are adopted by the Board of Trustees ultimately. However, they they are ordinances that deal with with development related issues. And obviously, they they that is an area where where you do have a great deal of expertise, so from reviewing various site plans. So we want to bring these to you and and ask ask for your thoughts and and your questions and related to each of these. The ordinances themselves are a bit long in the tooth. We've recognized some some deficiencies in them, similar to what what happened with our our previous zoning ordinance. And it recognized an opportunity to perhaps do some updates and 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 get those, take care of those deficiencies. So with regards to the private road ordinance, the the ordinance itself is is very thin on the details. It was it was adopted. It has some very basic standards. It essentially says that a private road needs to follow the County Road Commission standards. The design standards for, but it has no very little information related to how how a private road is approved. It has no information on standards for existing private roads. And this this is one of the areas where we run into an issue. We have, for example, a private road in the township that that developed over a period of time. That's the only way I can I can say it. It sort of accumulated a little section here, a little section there. Each section with its own addressing scheme, each section with its own standards, design standards. Later on, a small residential housing development sort of connected into it that added another factor to it. And what we ended up with is a very strange addressing scheme along this road, naming scheme along this road. And no way to really try to resolve that. We've we've gotten, had some contacts from the county and from our, in particular, from our county emergency management folks who are concerned about the ability to find houses on this road in the event of an emergency. And they they are looking in particular for some kind of means to be able to to get get the road readdressed. From the other, from our perspective, I think it really could use some design work as well. The road is very narrow. It's essentially one lane. So these kinds of details with existing roads, there currently is no mechanism to try to to seek improvements. You know, in our in our zoning ordinance, one of the things we added to it was that provision called nonconforming sites where an older 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 site, a site that was developed many years ago, that they're coming in, they would like to do some things to it. You have the ability to review that site and ask for certain improvements without necessarily requiring them to fix everything that might not meet our current standards. What we'd like to do is something similar with the private road ordinance and have some provision in there that could require some basic public safety improvements if they're found to be deficient. And then, but but not necessarily fix it up to the current standard. Just but to take care of those basic, basic details. So that's that's where we're coming from with this. We'd like to also have an ordinance that has a clear approval process and clear standards for approval as things come up. And you can see some of the other details in there, the different types of approvals. A couple of the questions that will come up are related to paving. This is a significant one. Whether we require private roads to be paved or we allow some to be be gravel. Right now, gravel is an option under the county road standards, but gravel roads are a maintenance problem and so paving, requiring paving of those roads may be something that would help with that. But certainly a question we'd like you to consider and and provide some feedback on. In addition, special assessment districts. Right now, maintenance is a significant issue on existing roads. Often, there is no maintenance agreement. There's no means to collect funds and no centralized structure to to organize and and set up you know, maintenance, snow plowing, graveling, whatever it might be. It's kind of done on a ad hoc basis, usually by one property owner who is frustrated. And so one way to solve that is have a special assessment district requirement. That if a new private road is developed, that there must be a special assessment that will ensure that there's money for maintenance down the road and repaving when that time comes. So these are some of the things that that we we brought up. And and some of the things we'd like you to consider and and since you provide feedback on before we we undertake the process of developing some draft ordinance language.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley, is your hand up for this, or was that an old hand?
Yeah, no, Rodney actually kind of answered the question with that kind of final statement. I was just verifying that this is not so much the ordinance itself, but more of an outline of the type of content that they would like to include in in an ordinance. I did have a question about the minimum standards for the existing private roads. And I I get that, you know, Rodney, you were saying that essentially, you know, having some sort of trigger that would maybe not require full conformance to the to the updated ordinance, but some level of action to be taken. So that's that's not necessarily a case of triggering action when some sort of work is being done to that road, but essentially we're creating the township would be creating an ordinance that then gives gives the township the right to come in and say without any changes having been made to the road yet, come in and say, all right, these are some minimum standards you have to to do it. And whoever is responsible for that road has to at least meet the minimum, if they're not conforming entirely. Is that is that the right interpretation?
That that is, yes. So with with this kind of a situation, in many cases, once these roads are developed, there there aren't any changes that trigger a new review unless the road was extended, perhaps if some new lots were created, but even that, sometimes if so, if the lots were envisioned but had not been developed at the time the road was built, but if they were envisioned on the plans, then then even that would not trigger a new review. So this is really about a safety issue, you know, public safety, safety of the residents, emergency access. Those are the key elements that we would want to be focused on in terms of any minimum standards. We're not looking to 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 tell the 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 owners on a private road that might be you know, eighteen feet wide gravel that, oh, no, we now we need it twenty four feet. You need to meet this new standard. We're looking at a case where where a road is is has deteriorated down to a two track. You can't get a fire truck down it. You know, that's the level we're looking at. And that's why the language, I think we even talked about the the fire department essentially. Look at that. Can you get a vehicle down there? If you can't get a vehicle down there, well, then it's not in compliance. If you can get a vehicle down there and back, you know, if they can get the fire truck down and turn it around and bring it back, then then you fire truck, the fire department can access that in an emergency. But the basic, basic public safety type issues we'd want to address in terms of any any changes would be made. And the minimum standards would would not be bring it up to the current requirement, whatever that is. It would be bring it up to a level that allows for a fire truck to get down there and back. That's really, I think that's probably the short answer of it.
Okay, thanks, Rodney.
Commissioner Thering?
Special Assessment District. So are you saying that they'll just it'll be something that comes on like a tax bill where you so many so many dollars comes out and goes into a fund to replace or repair?
So this would be just just like the special assessment districts that the Board of Trustees has looked at for for roadwork earlier this year. And and I think we have a current one that's that's been worked on for for some street lighting work. And yes, it would it would be funds that would be collected as an assessment on the tax rolls. The township would would have that, it would be the collector of those funds. Those funds would then be dispersed based on the criteria of when there when when there's a need for those funds to be dispersed, whether that's for snow plowing or for or road repaving, whatever that might be. So the idea would be that 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 it would eliminate the problem that most of these older roads have. And that is getting all the all the owners that have responsibility for that road together and getting them all to agree to pony up whatever the number of thousand dollars are needed to to do the actual maintenance that's needed. Like I said, on most older roads that don't have a formal maintenance agreement, don't have a mechanism in place for this sort of thing. The work is usually done by one person. They have a tractor, they have a scraper. They they own a company that that, you know, that that maybe own a gravel company. Many times, that's the case, where they just take care of it because it's too frustrating to try to work with all the neighbors. And we, that's not a formula for success, and it's certainly not a formula. We want to continue with newer roads. The nice thing is, if we're talking about, especially if we limit the special assessment requirement to only a new road, in that case, in all likelihood, the developer of that new road also owns all the land associated with that road that he probably going to create lots on to sell. And so when you have one owner, it's very easy to get that special assessment district, the special assessment process going. The petition process requires more than fifty percent of the owners to agree. Well, if there's only one owner, that's one signature on the petition, then they can proceed with a special assessment. So it's something to consider. Like you said, I think I suspect we'd probably limit it to a new road, rather make offer the option on other cases, but but to require it for any new road that comes in.
So if I was a developer and and had a quarter mile road and was going to have five houses on each side, I would just go ahead and set up the Special Assessment District and there would just be funds put in there for the future.
Exactly. You know, in many subdivisions, that's the case already. You can have subdivisions that have, for example, Consumers Energy streetlights. Well, those are paid through a special assessment. And so the homeowners simply on their tax bill, there's an item there, assessment for the streetlights. The similarly, they, you know, in some cases, developers of subdivisions with private streets have an assessment for the streets that's already built into the to to the to the the payment process. For these private roads, and unfortunately, these older roads, they simply didn't have that.
So if so, so once that's done and I sell all the properties, now the special assessment actually belongs to the landowners. Is that correct? So how do they decide? Do they decide just similar to what what the funds go to? So let's say they want lighting, or let's say six of the ten want lighting. Is essentially that's what happens or?
Well, the special assessment would be for a specific purpose. And so with with regards to the roads, it would be for for maintenance of that road. And the and the assessment, the terms, the assessment would say exactly what it can be used for. The there would be a mechanism built in a maintenance agreement, you know, some kind of a mechanism, legal mechanism built in to to have that organized, so it's handled in an organized manner. Those are all details that would be worked out for each project.
Thank you.
Rodney, just to follow up on the special assessment assessment districts. So an assessment district traditionally would require fifty percent of fifty one percent of parcel owners to to agree to the Special Assessment District. But if we're talking about an existing private road that has kind of nothing on that, but does require some sort of improvement, or we're talking about a new a a new assessment district or a new development, is that then essentially, are we just saying that we're going to impose something or I mean, if a developer has the choice between saying, yes, I will contribute to an assessment district or or no, are they going to actually say yes, if they go, it's just a matter of spending money? Or how does how does that work with you know, some sort of existing roadwayer where the owners don't want to spend any money to improve it? Do we do we impose that or is that, how's that work?
Well, you you have sort of several questions there. Let's let's go back to the new one with the developer. Where he's the developer, he or she is the only property owner. That's the case where we certainly can require that if they would like to build a private road under our ordinance, we can require them to deal with the special assessment process. The it, as I said, I think in 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 other cases where we have existing roads, maybe some, maybe somebody wants to extend it, maybe somebody wants to widen it, maybe some additional lots are proposed. I think in that case, really, the the special assessment would be an option, which it is right now. We were just, in the ordinance, it would be written that way that they could use the special assessment process to to provide more certainty related to to having these these funds set aside for future maintenance. I mean, for example, if a road is paved down the road, down the road, I'm sorry. In the future, you know, go down fifteen, twenty years, and you're gonna have to rebuild that road. You have to repave it. And that's a significant cost. Well, you want to, it's far easier to deal with that cost if you put a little money aside every year than it is, you know, to get the bill. Here's your bill for ten thousand dollars and your bill for twenty thousand, whatever it is. You know, try to pay that in one one month sum. So that's where that the special assessment can be a benefit. But I think for existing roads, we would have to simply leave it as an option and only only require it. If we were if we were going to require it, only require it in the case of a new road developer, one, essentially one owner that would be involved and that they could make the proceed with the special assessment without without having to try to get multiple petition signatures, anything like that.
So just to follow up one more. So if you have a road, then that is below standards sufficiently so as to prevent emergency vehicles or other municipal vehicles or like mail delivery vehicles or something to make it down the road. Is that something that rather than if the if a petition is not taking up, taken up by the homeowners or the property owners that are using the road, is that something that essentially, we're not going to compel them? That's just something that the township may designate as we're going to improve this to a certain standard? Or how does that work in that situation?
Well, we wouldn't, the township would not be able to go in and and approve the road. Well, we wouldn't, the township would not be able to go in and, and approve the road. It is private property. We would have to, you know, we'd have to have a court order essentially allowing us in. Uh, and that's a whole other process. Uh, what, what, for these existing roads that are deficient, uh, in, in a way that, that, uh, that, that is a danger, it's a public safety issue. Uh, that would be pursued as an ordinance and enforcement item. As I said, we would have minimum standards in the ordinance. Uh, we would, uh, like, first calls would likely be uh, to the fire department. Can you get fire trucks down there? Uh, and, and have them take a look at that and give their assessment. And, uh, if it's found to be deficient, uh, to that point, then, uh, as I said, we pursue with the notice of violation. There, they would be in violation, whatever those minimum standards are that we've, we've included for existing roads. And, uh, we, we would simply notify all the property owners that have, uh, access to that road of the violation and give them options to correct it. Here's what the standard is. Here's where you are. Here's what you need to do, fix it. That, just like we do with any ordinance violation issue. Uh, and we would give them time to fix it. Uh, and that, and in fact, that time, time element would probably be something we need to put into the ordinance. So it'd be some guidance as to what, what would be required essentially, or, you know, how much time for, for, you know, if it, if we find it's a danger, you know, we, we might have a shorter period of correction if it's, if it's a public safety deficiency and that the fire truck has trouble getting down there, then maybe it's more time to get it fixed, but still get it, you know, pushing them to move ahead. Difference might be between thirty days and ninety days or thirty days and hundred and twenty days or whatever.
Yeah. And, and just for the record, I'm not against special assessment districts. I think they're actually a, a, a great way, especially, you know, the property owner that buys into it, a, a property, once the, the assessment district is already in place, doesn't really even know. I mean, they will, if they look at their taxes, but effectively they don't really know that they're paying that. That's just part of their, um, you know, part of what they're paying in taxes and, um, uh, it certainly is having participated in the assessment district myself, it's certainly um, much easier than, um, trying to make a community level effort to um, have improvements made. So I'm, it's just kind of a curiosity as to how things work. So thank you for that explanation.
I was, uh, while that exchange was going on, I was rereading the original, uh, ordinance. I'm trying to figure out exactly where a driveway leaves off and a private road begins. Uh, and I see this language in here about if it serves more than one or two lots and whether it, whether it, it empties onto a, an, you know, a non-private road or not, et cetera. But you're not proposing any, it doesn't sound like you're proposing any changes to the definition. Is that right?
Oh, we, we definitely, definitely are. That, that is an issue, uh, uh, in, in that there is a conflict uh, with our zoning ordinance, which no longer allows for, for those kinds of shared driveways for, for, for residential development, single family development. So, uh, we, we will need to make an adjustment there to make it clear that, that, uh, if you have, if, if you're trying to provide one access to, to two lots, that's going to be a private road. Um, you know, not a shared driveway. Uh, and that's like, so that, that's necessary because our zoning ordinance, uh, requires uh, that separate access, uh, shared driveways. They're, it's, it's convenience in some cases. Uh, but boy, they are the, they're the source of tremendous neighbor, neighbor disputes. They're, they are, uh, if, they're often a great deal of trouble down the road. Uh, and so that's why, uh, most communities have eliminated that option for shared driveways because they just are a source of trouble.
Okay. So then just to, just to make sure I understand what I was reading is, would that fall under number two, under deficiencies in terms of where you're getting, where you're making the point that, you know, you want to tighten some things up with regard to what is considered a private road and what isn't? Is that where I would have found that?
Well, number six actually talks directly about conflicts. We didn't, I didn't speak specifically to,
Oh, all right.
to, uh, back to shared driveways, uh, uh, is a conflict, but there, there are a number of conflicts in there with the zoning ordinance.
Uh, Commissioner Darren.
So the neighborhood I live in now, uh, that, that was the intent was to put in a private road and have it service. Um, I think there's ten lots here. And the developer was encouraged uh, to make it a county road. When I look at this, what, what we're really getting at here um, is the preparation to make it a county road. Truly. And why wouldn't we just encourage the developer to work with the county and make it a county road right from the get-go? If you're going to invest in it, cause it, cause if I'm a homeowner and I'm on a dirt driveway shared with everybody else and I'm handing the township a lot of money every year for something that I don't have, but it's in lieu of, hey, someday you're going to have to pave it and bring it up to county spec. Uh, that's not a good investment for, for homeowners, right? We're used to paying assessments after the piece of pipe's been put on the ground and it's servicing our house and we start paying for it, right?
So you, you're actually, you've, that's true. When you, when you're paying for that, that, uh, pipe in the ground, you are paying, paying, uh, in part for the, recover the cost associated with that. You're also paying in part for the cost to, to replace it down the road when its service life is over. So you're not just paying backwards, you are paying forward as well. I, I will say this, that, that we are fortunate in Isabella County that the Road Commission will still accept uh, a new local street as a public street. In, in some cases required to, uh, the subdivision, uh, uh, the land, the subdivision, subdivision plating requirements in the, in the state law, uh, essentially, don't give them a choice. If, if somebody comes in with a subdivision plat, uh, that they are public roads and the county has to accept them essentially if they meet their requirements. Uh, many county road commissions have essentially stopped uh, uh, accepting local streets as public, new public streets that they would have to maintain. They don't have money to, to maintain them. The road commission, uh, if you ask them, they're, they're going to plead poverty, of course, all the time, but they really, they really are. Uh, they have reason to plead poverty in some cases. I know they have that beautiful new building. I know they, they, they put a lot of money into their, to their site there and it's, it's very nice and it's going to be a great service for them going forward. But, but in reality, the, the, uh, revenue sources they have available to them are not really enough even to maintain their existing road network. That's the, the primary roads and the, and the collector roads. Uh, they, you know, they get some money from the township, uh, occasionally they get some money from other sources. They get sometimes federal monopoly money, uh, comes down from on high, uh, and, uh, and improves their budget event like the, uh, the American Rescue, uh, plan money. But, uh, in general, they, they really do have a limited budget because of how the tax structure works for them. Uh, and, uh, local streets, there is no funding source for them to rebuild those streets. So if you have a local street and it's a public street, when that street fails, you know, when it, it becomes time that, that, that has to be completely rebuilt, the county is likely going to be coming uh, to the township, coming to the property owners and say, we need help to get this done. So you're going to have that same process anyway. Uh, even if it was a public street. And frankly, in some cases, there have been special assessment districts that dealt with that issue in some communities. Um, so the, you know, it, there is no, I'd have, certainly from a township's perspective, I have no issue with the developer pursuing public streets. It, I think in the end, it's the best way to go. But I think also in the end, the road commission is going to get ever tighter on when they accept new public, local public streets into their system because they, they can't maintain them long-term.
Well, it's, it's not very encouraging for developers to, to come in and hear that kind of a message. You know, everybody likes having a shared driveway if somebody will scrape it and plow it. And I'm sure it's a lot less than putting in a, uh, a road that meets our, our requirements for a public road, right? So I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure that this wording is going to attract too many people to develop a condominium. If you're saying anything new, we're taking them down this road and putting assessments on each lot.
You know, one thing I'll say is that, that, uh, yeah, certain types of projects, condominium in particular, there is already a mechanism built into the condominium act to deal with this. We would, I think we probably would not require a special assessment for a condominium development as long as they dealt with it in their master deed and their bylaws, because they are already collecting dues. They, you know, they already have a condominium project often has general common elements. The road itself, uh, those roads are, are general common element of the condominium when they're private roads. And so they're already collecting funds to take care of that. And they already have a homeowners association to, uh, to manage it. So where that's the case, then there would not be a need for special assessment. Uh, but we, we do have private roads that will come in uh, through Meats and Bounds Land Division, uh, which is in, you know, the process entirely outside of your review. That's an administrative review, uh, under the law. And, and so uh, in that case, having this, having this requirement for a special assessment district would ensure that those types of projects also have the funding available and have a mechanism to, to provide for that future maintenance. So all that, those are details as we, as we develop ordinance language, we'd be looking at those, those specific items.
So the actual process for this is, uh, I mean, you're getting input from us, but if you decide to move forward, you'll create a draft and it will go to the Board of Trustees ultimately.
Well, I'd, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to keep, keep, uh, picking your brains on this. I appreciate the feedback and I appreciate the, the, uh, you know, the multiple perspectives. So what I'd like to do is, is ultimately, uh, once we sort of have come to some conclusions on these things and, and your questions have been answered, uh, we'll put together, uh, some draft ordinance language and bring that back to you. And, uh, if you're, if you would like, you certainly, uh, have you go ahead and make a recommendation to the board related to that when that time comes. Uh, that's like, so there's not a formal process for that under, under the, uh, uh, the, under the state laws that apply, but, but I think the feedback is, is entirely helpful. Uh, for this kind of a, a project where we're really looking at a development-related ordinance, both this and the sidewalk one that we'll be talking about next.
Okay. Um, while I don't want to cut people off if they have other questions, but I guess I'd just ask you, are there any, are there any items that we haven't touched on that you want uh, specifically, I see Ryan's got his hand up, but I'll still ask Rodney if, if there's anything else that you, uh, well, think about that. I'll go, I'll go to Ryan and then if there is anything else, I'll let you mention it.
Yeah.
So Ryan.
Uh, just a couple of points. Um, first and foremost, I, I, I do like understanding that this is kind of just framing in what the future conversation might look like in terms of actual uh, language that might be developed, uh, for the ordinance. I do like the, uh, generally speaking, what I see here, I think that, um, it's, I will admit, I don't know what I don't know. So, you know, potentially we're missing, you know, there's, there's things that could be missing, but, um, certainly I, I, I would very much look, look forward to seeing some actual ordinance language on some of the topics that are covered. Um, I don't know that it's necessarily popular with the township, but I would like at least to see some conversation about, and I know that we're moving on to, you know, sidewalks and pathways next, but some conversation about um, any scenarios or situations in which the township might assist financially in the improvement of a private road or things like that. And a, again, I don't know if that's necessarily something that is entirely palatable for the township, but, um, I, I, I'd like to know that we at least had the conversation about ways in which the township might incentivize, uh, property owners to improve roads, um, potentially with some seed funding or something like that.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Fuller.
Now, one thing we didn't talk about was the paving requirement. That would be really expensive for two people trying to build a common driveway, private road and for us to require asphalt surfacing or concrete. Uh, I don't know if we can make it situational requirement. I think that might be really tough on people.
Yeah, I, I, I had an initial similar sort of reaction to that. You always like to have paved, but, uh, there's an awful lot of, I mean, there's, there's miles and miles of, of gravel county roads as it is and so I'm, they're not always the best roads, but we live with them. So, uh, Commissioner Theron.
Uh, just like to, Commissioner Buckley talking about seed money for the special assessment districts. We actually, that was an agenda item on our board, uh, Board of Trustees, oh, two or three meetings ago. Um, and we, if we left the conversation with, we didn't feel that we could do it. We would like to do it, but we didn't feel that we could because there's only so much money in that fund. And if that fund gets exhausted, what the township is saying, if you, if a subdivision meets all the requirements for the special assessment district, that they'll go out and seek funding. So therefore, you know, maybe we gave seed money to this subdivision and the money's just depleted, so we just can't do it for that subdivision. So to try to keep it fair, that doesn't mean that the con- conversation can't happen again under different circumstances. That's a great point. Um, uh, former trustee Worley actually came in and talked about that. So we, we made it an agenda item and had a, I, I thought a really good discussion about it. Um, maybe that's something as that fund increases, we, we can use that in that way. But right now our conclusion came to, if all the money's gone and another subdivision comes in, the township will guarantee if they meet the requirements of, of the funding.
And I, I do appreciate that clarification and I, and I admittedly, I think that, you know, that the conversation might be a little bit more pertinent for the sidewalks conversation. Um, it'll be coming up. Um, I, you know, just to clarify, I think what my thinking was is that if we have something that, um, you know, that like we were talking about, that is maybe a minimum standard where if something is more fully deficient and we're trying to get, uh, um, you know, property owners to kind of come on board with some improvement, you know, maybe there's a lower threshold, but you know, maybe necessarily, maybe that doesn't necessarily qualify for, you know, simply uh, kind of a, putting a new top coat on some existing black top or something like that. So, uh, but you know, I appreciate that you guys are having the conversation. So thank you.
I will say with, with regards to, to, uh, the township uh, using public dollars for, for private, uh, private improvement. There are certain mechanisms allowed under state law where we have the ability to do some of that. Uh, our, our DDA districts are, is the primary one, uh, in the township. Where, where we have the ability and, uh, if for land that's within the DDA district uh, to make certain, uh, public improvements, uh, that might be on, you know, it might be on, uh, and otherwise we couldn't do, uh, certainly I think, uh, in these DDA, for example, we paved a number of local streets. I think those were all public, so a little bit different. But if it had they've been, been private streets, the DDA still could have pursued that as a, as an improvement project within the DDA. The, the general fund, uh, has, has some additional restrictions. I'm not an attorney. I, I can't give you all those details, but I do know that, 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 that we're more restricted on how those funds can be used. We really do need to be using them for a public purpose. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, as I, I, my suspicion is, is that, that we would not be able to, uh, do the seed money idea for these private roads. Generally, the kind of, kind of, uh, benefit we can provide is time. You know, like I said, ordinance enforcement, we often provide time, you know, here's, here's what you need to do. You know, the ordinance says, I need, you know, you have thirty days to get it done, but the ordinance also says that we can give it an extension if you need. Come up with a plan. You're going to get it done in ninety days. Okay. We can work with you on that. Give you something in writing that says that you're going to do it in ninety days and then we'll, we'll proceed there. So that, I think that's the main benefit that we can, we can provide on that side of things.
There may additionally be, um, just as food for thought, there may be additionally be, um, and again, I'm certainly no attorney either, but there may additionally be some opportunity to waive administrative costs rather than spending public dollars. Uh, waive some of the administrative fees that are associated with that special assessment district. Um, where it's more of an in-kind contribution. But again, I'm, I'm certainly no attorney, just a baller.
Yeah, those, those are, yes, those are Board, Board of Trustees policies and they, Yeah, those those are, yes, those are board board trustees policies and they, and yes, the trustees decide ultimately what fees are charged, how much and. And they in fact did make a change actually to to the fee structure for special assessments. Uh just uh this last year. The uh I think the one of the one item that that uh we have not really touched on. Uh was the approval process. So we talked about that. We'd have we'd have private roads that come in through, you know, condominium development or or even a subdivision potentially. Uh but we also have then these, uh those have their own approval process. That's that's laid out, that's taken care of. Uh we just need to update our private order ordinance to reference that. So it's clear that 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 follows that. But we do have this this meets and bounds land division option where there is no uh. There's no approval process in the zoning ordinance or in another ordinance that that we would follow uh in reviewing the private road. And uh and so that case, we do need to have some kind of approval process in the private road ordinance to cover that. Uh we just noted that what we would like to see would be a preliminary. Plan stage somewhere to site plan, preliminary site plan and final site plan. Here, a preliminary private road plan. A a a final private road development plan, uh where the final is the construction plan. Again, it's when that's approved, they can go and construct. Uh they made, it mostly made it what uh the building code calls a grading permit, you know, the uh to to be able to do the. That basic grading work. Uh so uh. The the question would be is is I guess how involved you would like to be. Uh if if it comes in under a condominium, you're seeing it at the preliminary stage in the final. If it comes in under subdivision plat, you're seeing it at the tentative stage and the final plat stage. We could do something similar here for this like meets and bounds land division side of things. Where uh where again, you would see a a preliminary plan and you would see a final site plan. If we can also have it where the preliminary plan might be reviewed administratively and you might see only the final or vice versa. You see the preliminary plan and then. The final is administrative process. Uh in this case, there's uh there's not as much information. As a site plan, we're not looking at landscaping, we're we're not, we're it's really an engineering uh exercise. Uh we may, we may have a civil engineer involved to to take care of that for us. Uh because it it there are engineering details, drainage grading. All those kinds of things that that an engineer would need to review. Uh so it is something where for this meets and bounds process. We can, we can have the, for example, maybe the final. Uh uh plan be administrative, that you look at the preliminary plan, essentially agree that, yep, this this looks good, it makes sense. It follows ordinance and then from there it's administrative or we can have, like I said, both stages come to you. I I I with any of these, you don't have to answer tonight. Like I said, you're getting this information tonight. But I would certainly uh ask you to kind of ponder a little bit. And if if you have any feedback tonight, that's great, but. You know, think, look at your comfort level on that part of it. We we can build the ordinance accordingly. This is certainly something, as I said, we're not, we're not in a particular rush on this. Uh so we can, we can. Include this on the agenda next month and uh just if you have any further thoughts after you've had a chance to ponder what we talked about tonight. And provide some feedback then, that's that's completely fine.
Yeah, I guess I have to say I don't have any immediate strong reaction one way or the other. I could see, I could see. You know. I could see, I could see projects of this nature being able to be handled primarily administratively. Uh I can also, especially if they're like isolated, like some little road somewhere that's like interior to everything. And others that, you know, if it's gonna. Do all, is there is there anything that says that a private road has to dead end? Or can it, can it actually go between two public roads?
Uh it, yes, it absolutely can uh connect, uh it can connect multiple properties together. Uh if all the property owners are in agreement where things are going. Uh they can, it can cross more than one and that, of course, would be the preferred way things. We'd we'd rather have an integrated road network than a bunch of cul-de-sacs. Uh and uh so yeah, it they absolutely can connect together.
Just personally, I'm I'm I'd be more interested in looking at the ones that that really add to the transportation grid. Than the ones that are somebody's fancy driveway. Uh just just saying in terms of like what what interests me, but um. Yeah, so I I mean, that's my first blush reaction. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Okay, well, let's uh we'll we'll give it some thought and uh you know. Depending on what the January agenda looks like or December gen- uh agenda looks like, perhaps you do put it back on. Uh for for further uh further discussion.
I I actually expect that the December agenda is going to look a lot like this one because we're. We have a an early deadline for that agenda because of some uh so some staff vacations and such. Uh that that deadline is actually this Friday and uh. So far, the the only project that looks like it might be on it is 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 the graphic center central one. There could be something else, but so far that's what we have. Uh so uh yeah, I I would guess what I would suggest is with with regards to this, hang on to the. The memo and and we'll just carry it over to December.
Yeah, hopefully they're able to get all their loose ends tied together and certainly at least get close enough that it can be done. You know, if if it isn't picture perfect, hopefully it's as close as possible. Um so if there's no further comments on this, then I guess we'll turn to the sidewalk and pathway uh report and the discussion of that. So turn it over to you.
So here again, uh I asked I asked Peter to uh to look at the sidewalk ordinance. He has a great deal of experience with it. Uh and ask him to give me his his suggestions and ideas and and uh that's what you have here. Uh I added a few items to it. Uh that I was aware of. Uh but Peter did a great job just looking through all the specifics on. Uh the ordinance and and what what can be done to improve. Uh this is uh like I said, it's not quite as old an ordinance, two thousand nine, but still one that. That uh we've we've run into some challenges with it. Uh and as we noted, some deficiencies there. Uh it it doesn't really address a different different sidewalk with requirements. We have different roads. Uh I think a great example of of that variation is is what the road commission just built. They they. They were required to build a five-foot sidewalk in front of their their property. They came to us and said, can we build it wider? Uh we have our, we need a little bit more width uh to to get our equipment down it to plow it in the winter. And so they, it's a little over seven feet wide. Uh and it really on on. On that, on that road, that section of Remus Road M twenty, uh with the width of the road right of way with the with the. Uh the space that's there, that seven-foot sidewalk uh actually is a good fit. It it works well. Uh and it's it's a good standard, quite frankly, for that road. And it would be similarly a good standard. We have on bluegrass. Uh the sidewalks there are generally eight feet wide. Uh and that's the standard that we've required. There's nothing in the ordinance that requires it. But we've been able to get the those that have developed sidewalks along bluegrass to follow it. Uh so having some standards in the ordinance, yeah, for specific roads, I think would be helpful. Uh based on on the the hierarchy, kind of the hierarchy of use. Uh there's also, as noted in the deficiency section, there's no no provision in there explaining what a. A pathway should be used, an asphalt pathway versus a concrete sidewalk. There's not no language about easements. It's all all the language is about constructing sidewalks within the road right of way, which is not op- an option in most cases. So uh in addition, as you read the sidewalk ordinance, one of the glaring items that you will not find is anything that allows. You to grant temporary relief from construction. That policy, which was adopted in twenty eighteen, has no basis in the ordinance. Uh now. We're doing it, we're allowing it, but we need to put it in the ordinance. If we're going to continue to allow it, we need to get it in the ordinance. Uh and so we'd like to do that. We'd like to bring the policy into the ordinance so that that process continue. We don't, we don't want to end that polit- that policy. It's a good one. It's worked well. I think it's sometimes a struggle. It's a judgment call that you have to make. But I think there's value in in providing that kind of relief uh where the where the circumstances specifically warranted. And then the other item that we noticed a deficiency and talked about, I think some detail in here. Uh is related to the sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee. Uh the language of the ordinance does not make clear. Uh how that committee relates to you uh and to the board. Uh it it refers to the planning commission, but it doesn't make clear that that the committee is is a committee of the planning commission. Uh that that was the intent, uh but it but needs to be specified. And we'd like to also uh be be more specific and update the. The duties and the responsibilities of that committee. And and kind of look, bring it, bring it uh more explicitly under your umbrella as a committee of the planning commission. Under the State Planning and Enabling Act, you have the authority to to establish a committee. Um for a specific purpose and and uh and so having this committee, I think it has great value and certainly the insights from. From citizens that are that that are part of it, uh I think add great value, but uh but we do need to do take care of some things too. Clarify exactly how the committees, the committees went to work. So those are some of the items. I'm happy to answer questions either Peter or myself about any of the items that are in. In this.
Okay, thank you. It's open for discussion. Commissioner Buckley.
Apologize, I have a dog barking in the background if you hear him. Um but he's not in the same room as me, so um. I uh very much appreciate uh much of what is in. Um kind of categories for discussion here, excuse me, in the sidewalk ordinance. Um particularly what Rodney was just mentioning towards the um end of his comments, the the notion that. Um the 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 committee um we kind of articulate some sort of language that that. Uh denotes the fact that the committee is uh very much tied to the the planning commission. Um I I I've. Been pretty vocal about uh my frustration with the. With the policy that was adopted because essentially it was put to committee and then went straight to the trustees and did not kind of come back through the planning commission for. Uh any kind of review or comment before that happened and um and I think there was just a lot of confusion there in the way this. Uh the way we went about this. Um I I particularly like um the updates to some of the. Uh information about, um I've always, uh again, I've always been vocal about the fact that the some of the criteria was. You know, the the being able to document, for instance, uh whether or not there's been a death at a particular location, those sorts of things. Uh to me is never made sense. The one question I had for Rodney. Um is about, uh you know, we talk about kind of empowering the planning commission with the ability to. Uh grant some level of relief is i- i- is the reverse true as well? I feel as though. Um the current policy um essentially states that relief will be provided in these situations and relief will not be provided in these situations. And it it feels a little bit sometimes like the planning commission um must provide relief even though. Unique circumstances might suggest that a conversation is warranted to, you know, potentially uh require a sidewalk. Regardless, but I don't know if that's, is that something that's kind of considered for conversation here or is that um not the case?
I I think if if we're bringing this into the ordinance, it would be brought in as a. Uh basically, you you may grant relief uh if the circumstance warrants that they need to. They need to make the request, they need to make the case for it as as we they we require uh developers to do uh on a site plan. And you would make the judgment call. Uh this is not a case where where uh. Uh I I think the 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 uh default status is build the sidewalk and you know, so. Uh if the if the relief is warranted, you can grant it, you know, to allow temporary relief from that construction. But the the default is that they need to build the sidewalk per the ordinance. Uh so we would not have the the that that kind of uh broader approach. It would be just. Yeah, you would have the ability to consider granting relief. They need to make the case for it and then you you make the judgment call.
Um one of the things you have in here is um. Current ordinance provides no distinction between rural and urban areas as it relates to requirements. Are there, are there accepted definitions for those? Or does each community get to define it for themselves?
Uh that is the challenge, isn't it? Uh we have uh. I always like to tie it back to the master plan if I can. Uh we do have areas identified in in the master plan that are intended. To be the agricultural areas or tend to be preserved. And so what we might end up doing is is uh is tie back to a document like that. Uh this is not a zoning ordinance. It gets a little 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 different because it's not a zoning ordinance. Zoning has this direct tie back to the master plan. But I think I think that uh we can, we can do something with that. We're certainly in those areas intended to be preserved as agriculture. Sidewalks would not be required. Uh we might do it uh based on streets. So rather than tie into the master plan itself, we might. Say these road, you know, this uh Remus Road uh. Between X and and Y, you know, you know, the western edge of the township uh sidewalk is not required, you know. Uh Buridian Road, you know, sidewalk is not required. So we might that, we might end up doing that way. That's something we'll be looking at from a. A staff perspective, how would, how would be? How would it best be handled to try to identify that difference between urban and rural? So in all likely, we'd be. Calling out what we consider to be rural, which whether it's an agribug preservation uh element in the master plan or certain roads. Uh certain sections, roads, we'll we'll be looking at how to identify that.
Uh Commissioner Fuller.
Yeah, one of these bullet points. Was consider removing allowance for relief in industrial zoning districts. Is that a standing relief mechanism for relief? Is it fits in a zoning district currently?
Yeah, that's one of the items in the twenty eighteen sidewalk policy for temporary relief. If the property is in industrial district, it qualifies. To uh be considered for that temporary relief. Uh that's one that I'm not a fan of because of course, those are. Those are employment centers. That's where people work. They, you ought to be able to get there. If you don't have a car, if you want to bike to work, you ought to be able to do it. And so having sidewalks in the industrial districts, I think makes good sense. Now, there may be certain areas where it's just not feasible. Uh and that's again, well, somebody will kind of look at. And and try to draft up a little better approach to that, but I think the broad. Approach to simply exempt industrial districts uh is actually uh is actually detrimental to. To our residents, you know, want to go, want to be able to bike ride to work or walk to work. Uh and can't do it because there are no sidewalk connections.
Commissioner Thayer.
I don't know if I overlooked this or not, but is there something in there that would? For example, that the township is going to a certain area and they're saying we'll pay for the sidewalk. Would you give us the ease? And the property owner just may not want to do that. So as we have in in other projects we'd like to do. Is there any way that? You put in there that we have the right to revoke? Or maybe we can just revoke that and just when it comes up. It's on you. We're we're offering to pay now because of, we'll just say, bluegrass or Lincoln or whatever, whatever reason. Say, hey, we'll do it now, but if you're not going to give us easement, we're going to give you, we're going to give you six months to think about it and then we're going to just take that away. And eventually you're going to pay. So you get to decide.
Oh, you mean we're like where a development has had temporary relief granted?
Yeah, or and or like the, I I think, you know, there's funds for sidewalks for like Lincoln. You know, I don't know if that's a good example or not, Rodney, and I apologize if it's not, but just. Some project that the township has said, hey, we'll pay for your sidewalks. Would you give us the easement? Because it's a high-traffic area and we just have nothing but issues getting the easements. Eventually, it's going to happen because of, of what it is, somehow, some way, I'm sure it'll happen, but is it? Something we could say, well, we'll give you six months or however long that's reasonable to think about it and. We'll just, we'll, we'll allocate the funds to other projects of people that would like to have their sidewalks paid for.
Yeah, well, I think some of that is, is ultimately in the hands of the board of trustees as part of the, the budgeting process, that if, if we're not getting somewhere on. On a project, the board can, you know, amend the budget or, or simply not include that in next year's budget to move the money elsewhere. I, I do, in, in terms of the ordinance language, we do need to be careful, we, we don't want to get in a position where we might be considered to be. Engaging in a regulatory taking, that's, that's essentially where, where. Our regulation is, is so restrictive or so. There's compulsion in there in a manner that we essentially are requiring a property owner to either give up a property right or, or expend money. In, in a manner that, that is unreasonable. That, and that word, that word reasonable comes up a lot in court cases. Especially ones involving takings, at what point does something become unreasonable? But, and it's not very well defined, so it's something that basically it's case by case. We, we just want to be very careful that we're not getting into that realm, I, we don't, we don't, this is not something where we want to. Invite or, or have. Result in litigation, that's not, they're not in a situation to be favorable to the township. Sometimes litigation is necessary, we, we have to defend our ordinance, we have to defend. Public safety and those kinds of things, but this is, that's not a case for this, I, I think certainly we'll write the ordinance in a way that, that. Tries to implement the policies that, that the board has, the planning commission have outlined. Certainly in cases like, as you mentioned. Case where we, we propose the sidewalk and the developer won't, the property owner won't allow the easement, but they come back six months later. And want to develop that property, guess what, we're not going to pay for it now, we've, as you said, we've, we allocated that money because you wouldn't. Let us have it, we've decided we don't, we're not going to pursue an easement, eminent domain process now for easement. So six months later, they are developing, yeah, they'll have to pay for those sidewalks, so I put them in, they'll provide their own easement. That can easily happen. And, but hopefully we can, like I said, we can, can do work with property owners and. Come up with win, kind of win-win scenarios, that's benefit, frankly, most of these cases, these are commercial properties. Where there are multiple family properties, especially on bluegrass and broomfield. And it's a benefit to these, these owners to have that sidewalk there. I, you, you see, if you go along bluegrass, those sidewalks are in use all the time. And, yeah, that's even with some sections missing, you know. There's people out there all the time on those walks and, and, and that means more people that are going to, to shop in those businesses, there's, there's more people that. Might be tenants in, in those multiple family developments that, that are able to live there because they can easily get where they need to go. So that's, that's our hope is we can work out a solution. If, ultimately, if we need to, we'll pursue them in the domain to get it done, but that's, it's expensive and time-consuming, all we're doing is funding the lawyers to do that.
Commissioner Buckley.
Just one more observation and then a question, I don't see it really kind of identified here as a, as a point of conversation, but. Personally, I've always, one, one of the criteria we've used in the current policy regarding the expectation or. The provision of relief if a, if a section. Does not have at least fifty percent sidewalks already, I would like to see at least some sort of consideration of that type of criteria, because. It seems to be a self-defeating criteria that if we never have anybody take the lead on being the first to put a sidewalk in, then. Then we never reach that fifty percent threshold and we're constantly having people asking for relief, so. I would like to see that addressed in some fashion with a more developed policy or ordinance. But the question I had though was related to, and it's really more out of curiosity than anything, is that the very end. The, the consider adding a provision for payments in lieu of sidewalk construction, what is the incentive for a property owner? To kind of post cash in lieu of the construction. That the township would then hold until a point at which the adjacent properties are developing. What incentive is there for a property owner to do that, I guess?
Well, it, it essentially transfers the responsibility for putting that sidewalk in from the. From the property owner to the township, if we, if we take those funds, we are essentially saying that we agree. We will put that sidewalk in at some future date, so we, in, in that circumstance, we would probably require it. Take that, we're probably off it, we would require the property owner to provide the easement, so they would give us the easement. So we already have that in our pocket, and, and they gave us, if they gave us the funds, essentially we're green, we'll, we'll take care of that sidewalk down the road somewhere. The, the, there was, this is an item that has come up from the development community, they have asked, why don't we do this? Now, they, the, the conversations that, that I've been a part of where this has come up. Have been, why, why don't we, why don't you do this, I'll, I'll give you the money, you can go build the sidewalk somewhere else. And usually it's because of that, the language you just talked about, that, that, there's no sidewalk anywhere near this property. It, it might be commercial, but it's not near anything, or, or it might be in an area where there's just no, no other sidewalk built yet. So this would be as far as the, the property owner is concerned, the sidewalk to nowhere, you know. The first one, as you said, the first one in. And so their, their argument was, well, we'll give you the money and you go build it, you know, we're, we're actually will have some good. And so this one. Yeah, I, I don't think we would do that, I think we would actually be in a situation where if we took the money, we'd be. We'd be setting aside to build sidewalks in that area at some future date when we can connect up several sections or, or do a whole strip of them. It, it is a complicated option, it, it requires a lot of tracking of those funds, it, it requires. Like I said, it, it turns things around, rather than having the property owner be on the hook as part of the development to do it, all of a sudden we are on the hook to get it done. And of course, those funds, if we wait five years, are not going to cover the cost. You know, even figuring the, the tiny percentage of interest we might earn on those funds in the meantime, they're not going to cover the cost, so. There are definite downsides to it, it's something that has come up as an idea and. It certainly was worth including as a, as a, as a thought here, but ultimately, as I noted, it would have to be carefully considered. And the circumstances, I think, would be fairly limited where it would be allowed.
I guess I can see how it might make sense for somebody who's in a financing stage, how they could, you know, potentially. Roll in the, the cost of sidewalk in, in that financing stage as opposed to pulling it out of the pocket later. And I guess there's also a benefit potentially to the township, if it looks like maybe there will be some additional development next door or something where they can kind of. Wait to see how the project develops as a whole, so that makes sense, thanks Rodney.
Other questions and comment or comments on this? Will this have a similar? The, the, the. Process would be similar to the other one?
It would be, yes, if, if you're, would you like to have this on the agenda in December, look at it again, or you. Is there consensus that you're comfortable with what, what has been proposed?
Well, so I guess, I guess the question I would. Back to you, is are you comfortable with what you've heard and seen? So I, I guess the question is, you know, do you want to hear from us again before you invest the time in starting to draft something? Or do you want to draft something, because once you start to draft something and it starts to look more ordnancy. I think that's going to get more, more of our attention and we'll have, it's going to be kind of more concrete for us and you may get better feedback that way. Even if it forces you to go back and, and revise things.
Right, right, yeah, and I agree, I, just like the zoning ordinance. The first draft is never the last draft, there's always going to be changes and adjustments, and I, I'm comfortable based on our discussion. It, it seems like there's a consensus that you're, you're, you're comfortable with the direction we're heading with the sidewalks. That we could, we could start putting some ordinance language together, I don't think you're going to see it in December, certainly, but, but. We'll, we'll work on some ordinance language and bring it back to you to take a look at, just as we did with the zoning ordinance project. So I, we'll pursue that and. Like I said, for the private road, we'll, we'll just put that back on the agenda for discussion in December and see where your thoughts are on that one.
Yeah, sounds good, I think you'll find there'll be some diversity of opinion on some of these points, but I do think that. You know, I, there seems to be consensus that it's appropriate to move forward with some revisions at this time. On both of these. Anything else? Okay, so, thank you for that, everybody, so now we've got. Other businesses, is there any other business that needs to come before us tonight? Okay, seeing none, extended public comment portion of the meeting where individuals are invited to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not. We ask you to give us your name and, well, indicate your desire to speak. Give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to five minutes, extended public comment is open at nine oh two. We have no attendees at this point, so unless any of you are suddenly members of the public. We'll assume we don't have any, so we'll go ahead and close that back up, nine oh three. Final board comment, any comments from board members? Everybody excited for Thanksgiving? Reasonably excited, alright, so if there's no other comments, then. We've completed our agenda, will be adjourned until our December meeting, which as Rodney indicated will. May be fairly similar to this one in terms of the agenda and we'll go from there, so thanks everybody and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving.